I'll read those for you.
Thank you.
Starting with Sandy Barud, she says, Dear Mayor and Council Members, in regard to the historic preservation item on March 2nd, 2021 study session agenda, I enthusiastically support the vigorous use of the Mills Act to incentivize Monrovia homeowners to landmark their historic homes and buildings. It's a powerful tool for protecting our priceless and irreplaceable architectural heritage. It's that charming architecture that attracts many folks to live, work, or visit Monrovia. That in turn generates value that fills our coffers to more than balance the loss of Mills Act tax revenue. The Mills Act also supports homeowners' ability to invest in the constant upkeep that old homes require. It helps our neighborhoods stay in good repair, also key to our city's appeal and economic well-being. I'm fortunate to own an 1887 home, which is what drew me to live in Monrovia. It does not qualify for landmarking because it does not meet the stringent standards. Even so, I support doing all we can to landmark homes, and that means maintaining the Mills Act vitality. I appreciate the council's and city staff's ongoing commitment to historic preservation. It's kept Monrovia such a charming gem. Next is from Jim Wigton. You don't get something for nothing. The California State Legislature recognized this in 1972 when it passed the Mills Act, providing the mechanism by which cities in California could recognize historic resources. To offer an incentive for owners to restore and maintain these resources, the legislature provided the Mills Act contract, which grants the owner a reduced property tax in exchange for putting the money back into the resource, thereby making it easier to deal with the financial hardship that often accompanies restoration. It would be a mistake to only consider the financial impact without also taking into account the overall benefit to the community. Monrovia has seen what can happen when properties are left to decline and how that decline affects the entire town. We have also seen how pride in and care for these properties improves the quality and livability of our neighborhoods. That is why we have today, in no small part due to the resident's support for preservation. Submitted by Jim Wigton, 35-year resident of Monrovia and Monrovia Old Homes Preservation Group President. Next one is from Francis Joffrean. Greetings, esteemed City Council members, clerks, and anyone else who has to listen. I have strong positive input for the Mills Act. I understand that it reduces property taxes as an incentive to keep and renovate old structures. I understand that the results in a loss in revenue to the city. I believe that so many factors are operating here that bear examining in this discussion and would really recommend the city study it further along possibly these lines to suggest a few. First, the Mills Act is needed. I'm rehabbing a 1937 house in Sierra Madre, and I can tell you that the costs add up. To bring it to usable, it will cost about $200,000 for a 1,300-square-foot house. That's a lot of money. It won't qualify for Mills because someone changed the front windows years ago. How to get people to spend that kind of coin to rehab an old structure? Tax incentives. Second, with your history and those gorgeous homes that keep property, that keeps property values high. Everyone loves a beautiful, older home. Beautiful vintage homes drew me to Monrovia. We bought a non-vintage home. Not complaining, but our tax basis, when we moved here, tripled due to the recent reappraisal of the house we bought. It wasn't worth that before it sold. Net tax gain to the city on the one we sold and the one we bought. After that, they can only increase a small percentage per year due to Proposition 13. So you'll have seniors in their homes for 40 years paying $2,000 in taxes per year or less while we pay that much per month. Again, not complaining, but the obvious point is that encouraging houses to turnover is more profitable than much anything else you could do. A beautiful, vintage, walkable downtown, too. Restaurants bustling draws in lots of visitors and a great place for a huge party. All great sources of tax revenue for the city. Another idea that would propose is that you consider designating certain structures as obviously of no historic value. They aren't pretty, and nothing exciting happened there. This would allow small developers like me to buy them up and fix them up, knowing they would not face this hurdle. It's very time-consuming, and while holding a property and paying for it, that is a disincentive to development. So I buy an old duplex at the base of no mo. It's ugly and not historical, and we all agree about that. I go ahead and pour money into it, make it gorgeous, not tall or not huge, not a mansion, just beautiful, usable, single-family residence. When I sell that, it gets reappraised now, and the city makes more tax revenue forevermore. The Monrovia Historical Society is a very valuable resource. They could help provide this info. Just walk the town with Steve Baker and take notes. Pay them a fee to certify certain houses as nonhistoric, and up goes your tax base and their revenue, too. I'm thankful that they informed their membership that this issue was pending so that I could reply. Please excuse the hasty letter. I got the email last night and have plans today. Very important issue, though. More hastily considered ideas of mine include that perhaps materials recycling credits could be applied at state levels for houses not demolished. And perhaps the future development of lots of granny flats, aka ADUs, which I believe we all need, will also add value and therefore tax base increase. Actually, any addition to a residence triggers a reevaluation. Not renovation, just additions and new construction. Keep up the good work, Monrovia. Francis Joffrean. This one I don't think was intended to be anonymous, but I don't know the name by the email address. It says, I'm so glad the issue of historic preservation is being studied again. Monrovia is such a place, such a special place with so much history, beauty, and special character. I would hope this review would consider all options for protection and preservation, including historic districts like Wildrose and Encinitas, PDAs, planned area developments like Esplanade, et cetera. In a conversation with a degreed historic preservation specialist, the specialist shared the opinion that Monrovia has been lax in their preservation efforts in comparison to other surrounding cities like Pasadena, et cetera, and that developers have had too much influence here. My hopes would be that the city manager, city council, planning department, and others would take strong action to protect the special character and heritage of Monrovia. Thank you. This is from Donna Baker. I'd like to, sorry, as a local Realtor, I'd like to comment on tonight's agenda regarding the historic preservation ordinance in relation to the Mills Act contract. While I understand that this agreement between the city and landmarked homeowners causes reduced tax income for the city, it is a huge benefit to homeowners. Not only does it allow a reduced tax consequence for the property owner, but it provides incentives for these owners to improve their properties when sometimes it would not be an option. The money saved in tax dollars converts into replaced and rotted wood siding, repair of broken chimneys and windows, upgraded electrical and retrofitting, among other improvements. Not only does this allow these homeowners to accomplish these upgrades with their tax savings, but it also increases property values when an owner goes to sell that particular property. Increased home values helps generate added tax dollars otherwise lost through the Mills Act by also increasing home values citywide. In the 20 years I have been selling landmarked homes covered by Mills Act, every single home has added value that would not have been offered without the tax savings and upgrades that were accomplished with that saved money. Our historic preservation ordinance and the Mills Act contract has made Monrovia a place people want to call home. By eliminating the Mills Act option, there is no incentive for people who buy older homes to landmark and preserve them for historical value. I urge the city council to continue to offer the Mills Act option as part of the current landmarking program. Very sincerely, Donna Baker, Monrovia resident and Realtor. And then lastly, we have from Stephen Baker. Ladies and gentlemen, when I returned to Monrovia in 1967 after an eight-year hiatus, I was chagrined to learn that the beloved community of my youth was beginning to falter, losing economic vitality after 80 years and succumbing to stagnation and apathy. The decline continued until 1974, when it reached critical mass. The fateful municipal election that year resulted in a new majority on the city council and sowed the seeds of the Monrovia Renaissance. Dynamic new leadership and innovative staff stemmed the tide of decline, and Monrovia headed in the right direction once again. It was about that time that Ruth Ryan, 1944 to 2014, real estate editor for the LA Times, advised young couples seeking a new home to look in Monrovia since the city had a wonderful housing stock priced well below that of neighboring communities. A number of young couples did just that, buying vintage homes and investing long hours of sweat equity to bring them back from decline. Two of those couples were responsible for the formation of the Monrovia Old House Preservation Group in 1980, a support organization for those who, like themselves, needed mutual support and the sharing of resources. The Renaissance of Monrovia and the city's treasure trove of historic architecture came to the attention of the LA Times again in 1983. Their cover story in their home magazine of January 16, 1983, featured "Monrovia: A Study in Small Town Restoration," researched and written by Diane Williams-Lava. That article in turn brought Monrovia to the attention of the LA Conservancy, who partnered with the Monrovia Old House Preservation Group for the first Old Homes Tour, a tradition that has continued to the present time and has attracted generations of participants and spread the mystique of Monrovia regionally and beyond. By 1995, city leadership agreed that Monrovia needed a historic preservation ordinance, and an advisory committee was established. Many local preservationists sat on that committee, myself included. Our charge was to study existing ordinances in surrounding cities, evaluate their applicability to Monrovia, alter them as needed, and produce a working document. We were told very specifically that a mandatory preservation ordinance was not an option given the strong community reaction to one in a nearby community. That was acceptable. What was acceptable, though, was an ordinance that offered a carrot rather than a stick, and that carrot was the availability of a Mills Act contract as an inducement to landmark a home. We understood that Monrovia would lose a portion of the property tax savings from the Mills Act contract, but the prospect of that savings being reinvested in a historic property and the potential for safeguarding Monrovia's architectural heritage was considered to be more than adequate trade for the loss of property tax revenue. Monrovia's historic preservation ordinance and the activities of now Monrovia Historic Preservation Group have been major contributors to the highest esteem in which Monrovia is held by their sister cities in the San Gabriel Valley. Gone are the days of Monrovia being a depressed real estate market, quite the contrary. I would like to suggest that the higher property taxes generated by Monrovia's newer residents, who are drawn to the city by its rich architectural heritage and revitalized commercial areas, are more than compensate for the amount of property tax not received from the Mills Act properties. Rather than seeing it as a loss, I see it as an investment in our community's past and its future. It is my hope that the inducement to preservation offered by Mills Act contracts may continue well into the future. Sincerely, Stephen R. Baker. And that is the end of public input.
Okay, well, we certainly do appreciate all of the input. I know there's a lot of strong feelings about this, and it's good to hear that. So we'll now move on to our historic preservation program overview. And I think I saw Craig there somewhere.
Yes, Mayor, I am here.
Are you doing this?
I am.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, members of city council. I'm very pleased to be here tonight to give you an overview of the historic preservation program. As you may recall, I was before the council several months back to talk about all of the things that the Historic Preservation Commission has accomplished in the last 25 years to recognize their 25th anniversary. And where that was mostly focused on the accomplishments, tonight I really want to give you kind of a nuts-and-bolts overview of our program, Historic Preservation 101. And as had I known we were going to have such amazing, eloquent public comment, I would have probably not spoke. They did a great job, at least talking about the Mills Act contract. But our program is really much more than that, and all of these different pieces work, really work together. And I hope at the end of the presentation, you get a good sense of how those different components work, which will then, you know, influence any future discussion of the program. Monrovia's ordinance was adopted in 1995, and what the Historic Preservation Ordinance does is it establishes a framework and the authority to implement the Historic Preservation Program. And there are basically four components of the ordinance. First, it establishes a process and the criteria in order to designate historic landmarks and historic districts. It sets procedures and findings to review and approve modifications to already designated properties. It also sets specific incentives that are provided to designated properties. And then finally, it established the Historic Preservation Commission as a body to help administer the program. So the first component is designation. This really is the crux of the program. And Monrovia's ordinance is fairly broad in what could be considered a historic landmark. It is basically just about anything, as long as it meets one of the criteria. It could be a structure, it could be a site, it could be a natural feature, it could be an object, such as the box jeweler's clock or the farmer's club fountain that's being considered right now. A historic district can also be designated if it meets one of the criteria. And the Historic Preservation Ordinance has seven different criterias, and in order to be designated, it just needs to meet one of those seven criterias. Some of the other key components related to designation are that historic landmarks, for an individual landmark, the ordinance is voluntary, which means that a property owner has to consent to the submitted of an application. Now, for a historic district, which is a geographic area that includes a lot of properties, it only requires a simple majority, so 50% plus one of the property owners must consent to that application. Additionally, for designation, whether for a district or for a landmark, it does require two public hearings. One before the Historic Preservation Commission, who acts an advisory role to the city council, and then ultimately the city council, who has the authority to grant those designations. Another component of the ordinance is the certificate of appropriateness, and this allows owners of designated properties to make modifications through a review process through the Historic Preservation Commission. And so the trigger on the need for certificate of appropriateness is that for an exterior modification, when a building permit is required, then it must go through the certificate of appropriateness process. Things that don't require a building permit, like painting or re-roof, which actually, I take that back, re-roofing does require a permit, so I don't want to put the wrong information out there, but there is an exemption for that. But other things that are small repairs don't require a permit, so they don't need a certificate of appropriateness. Also, interior modifications don't need a certificate of appropriateness unless there's something specific that was part of the designation, like a bad sheltered fireplace, and this change would impact that. The commission must take a look at that and make sure that this change doesn't adversely impact any historic character-defining feature of that property. And it does require a notice of a public meeting. There are a number of incentives that are included in the ordinance that are afforded to property owners of historic landmarks and of contributors within historic districts, and those include the use of the state historic building code. And this is a very powerful tool that allows the building official to make calls and changes and modifications to the interpretation of the building code in order to preserve certain character-defining features. What it doesn't do is, it doesn't give the building official the ability to not implement portions of the code specifically related to safety and health. Also, building permit fee relief, so you get a discount on your building permit. It allows for some zoning flexibility, looking at setbacks, unit size, and parking. And then finally, the Mills Act contract is probably our primary incentive, and I'll talk a little bit more about that coming up. The demolition review ordinance is not part of the Historic Preservation Ordinance. It's a separate component, and this was part, this came out of the neighborhood study in 2014, 15, and 16, and was adopted in conjunction with the Neighborhood Compatibility Ordinance. What these regulations do is that requires that if a change or modification or demolition hits certain triggers, as far as removal of 50% of the roof structure or the complete demolition, if it hits one of those demolitions thresholds, then it goes before the Historic Preservation Commission for them to review. And this would be for any residential structure that's 50 years or older. So if it was built in 1971 or before, then it would be subject to this ordinance. The historic significance is determined by the commission, and it requires a written assessment to be prepared by a qualified historic preservation consultant. And we have a list of qualified consultants that have been vetted out, and they can choose from any one of those. There also is what I call the common sense provision in there that for those properties that have an obvious lack of historic significance, there is an exemption request. It's still reviewed by the commission, but they do not have to hire a consultant. So it goes before the commission, and the commission, if they determine that, yes, that they can, it doesn't have any historic significance, then that exemption's granted. Or they may say, you know, we do need some more information, and so we recommend that you go and hire a historic preservation consultant. Since this ordinance has been adopted, we've processed 50 historic assessment reviews. Forty-eight of those were approved, and there were two that, in the end, both the applicants decided to pursue other options instead of demolition. And then finally, the other component of the ordinance is the Historic Preservation Commission, and their primary role is to administer the Historic Preservation Ordinance, which is part of the zoning ordinance. They do have authority to approve a certificate of appropriateness and conduct special reviews, such as old-town facade remodels or a review of changes to potential historic landmarks. They also act as an advisory to the city council on all matters related to historic preservation and make recommendations on landmark and district applications, as well as on Mills Act contracts and the conditions of approval for a Mills Act. And then finally, they act as an advisory body to the Planning Commission on amendments to the Historic Preservation Ordinance. Because that ordinance is part of the zoning ordinance, they would make those recommendations to the Planning Commission. They also provide guidance to the Planning Commission when there's an entitlement that may impact a historic structure. So even those structures that aren't designated, we will take them through the Historic Preservation Commission to give staff some guidance and the Planning Commission some guidance, and we've actually come up with some really great solutions by bringing everybody together. And I think the project at 525 South Shamrock, the Monrovia Market, is a really good example of that one. So the Mills Act contract, this is really the crux of our incentives, and I think many of the people who submitted comment really very eloquently spoke about how important and what a powerful tool this is, and it really is. And the state of California enacted legislation in 1972 that authorized cities to provide this tool, and it really is the most important tool in California's toolbox for historic preservation. So what the legislation does is it allows jurisdictions to enter into an agreement with a property owner of a historic property, and in exchange for preservation, maintenance, and restoration, it allows the tax assessor then to reassess them using the formula in the Mills Act legislation. Monrovia adopted the Mills Act program in 1995 as part of the Historic Preservation Ordinance, and currently, Mills Act contracts are available to all property owners of locally designated historic landmarks. So even though it goes through an application process, it is a benefit of owning a landmark. It is also available to all contributors within designated historic districts. Now, as opposed to historic landmark designation, where we cannot apply conditions, the city can apply conditions to a Mills Act contract. So it does allow us to look at a property individually and look at what are the needs of that property, from a maintenance standpoint, from a preservation standpoint, from a restoration standpoint, and even in ongoing maintenance. So there are a number of standard conditions that are included in every Mills Act contract. An electrical safety inspection is required. It does require a certificate of appropriateness for all exterior modifications, and even though this is in the ordinance, this provides us an extra layer of review and enforcement if someone does work without a certificate of appropriateness. It does require a landmark plaque be placed on the property. That's not a requirement, again, we can't require that of a landmark, but we can require it of a Mills Act contract property owner. It also requires seismic retrofit be completed within 10 years if the house hasn't already been seismically retrofitted. And this is a biggie. This is a very, can be a very expensive endeavor, and every house is different, and so we've had seismic retrofits that have been as low as $3,000, $4,000, and that's very rare, but it does happen, up to $70,000, $80,000. So sometimes they can be very extensive and very, very expensive. So this helps to fund that, and this is required after 10 years of owning, of having a Mills Act contract. The contract also requires regular progress reports. So within the first 10 years, a progress report is due every two years. So the property owner has to report back to the city on their progress in meeting their conditions of approval, any other maintenance or preservation things that they've done. This is all then reported back to the Historic Preservation Commission, and then after the first 10 years, they have to provide that report every five years. Additionally, staff goes out and verifies these and does a lot of follow-up on these reports, as does the commission. Speaking of specific conditions, this does allow us also to look at what are those needs of the resource. Do they need, does it need to have, does it need to be painted? Does it need a new roof? A lot of times, we need to have the windows repaired or even replaced if they are inappropriate. Siding repair or replacement in kind, this can be very, very expensive. A lot of times with the old wood-sided houses, they don't make that same gauge anymore, so you have to go out and have it milled. A condition of approval may also be to remove inappropriate modifications, and then there's also standards and conditions related to ongoing maintenance and preservation. Part of this review, this is a dialogue between staff and the applicant to prepare this 10-year review, and then this is then further vetted out with the Historic Preservation Commission through the application process, and all of this is then recommended to the city council for your final consideration. The Mills Act contract, as specified in state law, is a 10-year period, but the contract renews itself every year. So there's an evergreen clause in there, so at the end of the first year, it renews and adds another year. So it's a rolling 10-year contract, and essentially, it runs in perpetuity. A contract can be terminated, and there's two ways to do that. One would be by the city or by the property owner. Either one can issue a notice of nonrenewal, and this is without cause. What this does is, once this notice of nonrenewal is received, then the automatic renewals will stop, and so the contract will just run its course, and after 10 years, it's expired, and the contract is null and void. There is no penalty for this process. Now, the other way to terminate a contract is that the city can revoke a contract for cause. So if the contract is out of compliance, there's a revocation process that requires a public hearing before both the Historic Preservation Commission and the city council to hold public hearings on the matter. If the contract is revoked, there is a significant fee that's assessed to the property owner, and it's equal to 12.5% of the current fair market value, so not the Prop 13 value, not the Mills Act value, but what the tax assessor determines that property is worth on the day that the contract is canceled. So, for example, on a million-dollar property, that would be $125,000 fee that would be due, so a pretty significant stick. When properties are reassessed pursuant to the Mills Act law, they are reassessed three ways, and they're reassessed every year, and whatever the lowest of those three assessments is, that's the amount that's enrolled by the tax assessor and what the property taxes will be based on. So the first formula is the Mills Act formula, and it's kind of an odd formula. It's based on income, potential income value determines that, so what is the, how much could it rent for, and that's kind of the basis for that, and that's just how it's established in state law. It is also assessed using Prop 13, and then finally, the fair market value, so whatever it's worth today. So those three values are determined, and the lowest one is enrolled. The formula, the way it's set up in state law, really favors owners that have newly acquired their properties, and at some point, the assessment reverts back to the Prop 13, and very rarely will it be the fair market value. I've never seen that here, but I have seen that in other communities where the fair market value actually is lower than the Prop 13 value. So here's a couple of examples of how the assessments work on some of our Mills Act contracts. So Mills Act contract number one on Primrose, the Prop 13 value is 1.465 mill- So, um, Mills Act contract number one on Primrose, um, the Prop 13 value is, uh, 1.465 million dollars. The Mills Act, using the Mills Act formula, is $619,000. So this is a 58% reduction, um, in their, uh, property tax based on using Prop 13 as the base. We do have a, a couple of examples here. Mills Act contract number 15 and 32 on Ivy and El Nido. Those have, uh, those property owners have owned their properties for quite a while. And so both of those have reverted back to Prop 13. So they are not seeing any benefit from the Mills Act contract anymore. However, if the property sell, then the, those new property owners will see a pretty significant, um, increase. The, the Mills Act contract, regardless of, of who owns it, um, will basically stay the same. So if it, if it sells, uh, that Mills Act assessment would still be on, on the Ivy property, would still be $294,000 for that particular year. Um, and then there's a couple of others, uh, examples just showing you, um, some of the new, uh, properties that have transferred more recently. I want to highlight 805 South Shamrock. That's a commercial property. And as you can see, even though it hasn't been owned for a real long time, the va- the, the reduction in property tax value, uh, is not nearly as great as, as it is on residential properties. And that's part of the formula, the capitalization rate that's used in there. Again, favors residential properties over commercial properties.
Craig?
Yes?
It's Be- it's Becky. Since we're on this little, uh, chart here, I wanted to ask, you've mentioned now a couple of times that the property reverts back to Prop 13 levels. At, at what point does that happen?
So that would be at the point where whenever, you know, the, these properties are reassessed every year using the formula. So it, it, there's not a, there's not a carryover. And so at the point where the Mills Act value is now higher than Prop 13.
Oh, okay, I get you.
Then, then it would go back to Prop 13.
How, do you know about how long it takes for that to happen?
You know, we've seen it in, uh, as little as 18 years. And sometimes we have properties that have been owned for, for 30 years. And it really depends on, um, size, location. Uh, and, and again, it's, it's all based on that rental value, which is, um, the, the tax assessor determines all those formulas. But I'd say probably somewhere in the 20-year range, between 20 and 30 is typically where we see most properties, um, no longer receive benefit from the, the Mills Act contract. We have about 15, uh, right now that aren't receiving benefit from the Mills Act contract.
So it, it does continue to be reassessed? I mean, and so when those two, um, meet up, then it start, it reverts back to the Prop 13?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So the, the, we get updates from the tax assessor every year. The most recent one that we've received was based on January 1st, 2020. And this, uh, accounts for all contracts that were processed by the city in 20, through 20, mid 2018. So it does take, uh, a, a while for, um, the assessments to, to show up. This included, this assess, this, uh, last batch included 137 contracts. The average reduction, um, in, uh, in property tax was 46%. The estimated total city revenue decrease was $171,392. And the average tax, uh, decrease per contract was roughly about $1,250. So this table shows, um, how the, uh, city revenue decrease has changed over the year for the last, uh, 15 years. So-
Craig, I'm sorry, this is Gloria. I'm in, for anyone that's watching, I'm in the conference room at City Hall. And we're having a little trouble keeping the lights on. Could you go back in one slide and, and give me those Mills Act averages again?
Sure. So, um, as of, of January 1st, 2020, based on the information from the tax assessor, this included 137, uh, Mills Act contracts. The average reduction of those 137 contracts was 46% reduction in their property tax value. Uh, sorry, property tax that's owed. And then the estimated total, uh, revenue decrease of, that the city realized was $171,392. And so that was, that translates into about an average decrease per contract of, uh, $1,251.
So the, the amount that it cost the city was $171,000 total?
Correct.
That was the entire cost of the program for 2020?
That was the, that was the entire cost of, of the, that was the revenue decrease that, that we saw. Now, there's, there's staff costs and other costs, but as far as the reduction in the property tax, yes, you're correct, that is the cost.
Since Gloria had asked for repeat on that, I'd, I'd like to ask, I don't know if there's, if we're able to even estimate this. But, um, someone pointed it out in, in the, uh, public comment. Is there any way of our knowing of the increase overall of property values because of the fact that we have the, um, Historic Preservation or the Mills Act, um, program? Have we, do we have any estimate as to how overall the property, um, property values have increased?
We don't, you know, we don't, I don't have that at, at my fingertips, but I, I could say that probably looking at how property values in Monrovia have changed over time, since we, you know, over the last 25 years, since we've had the Mills Act contracts, since we've had Historic Preservation, I mean, the, the increases in property values has been dramatic in the last 25 years. I don't, I don't know what that number is, but I would, I, I feel very confident saying that the amount of increase in property taxes that we've received due to the increased value overall in the city has been significantly more-
Right.
-than the, than the loss-
Right.
-that we have had-
Right.
-by the Mills Act contract.
So I, I'd like to ask, uh, that we let Craig finish his report and then wait and see if we have any questions till the end. Our other meeting is starting in 15 minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
So again, this, this chart just kind of shows you, um, how that, um, revenue decrease has, um, changed, uh, through the years. And I, I think, uh, with some calculations we could do, um, provide some more information on, and compare that to, um, how the value of property has changed over, over the same period. But over, as, as the program has matured, if you look in 2004 to 2008, 2009, those, those increase, increases really are based on a large number of contracts being, uh, reviewed. 2010 to 2016, we, we weren't processing that very many, uh, through the recession and, and, and past that. And then it really started to stabilize by about 2015. And now we're processing between four and seven a year. You, you, probably closer to four on most years. Those little blips in 16 and 19 really, those represent a, a change in the, uh, formula, how the county tax assessor was, uh, was doing the formula from the Mills Act contract. They were actually challenged, uh, by, um, several preservation groups that they weren't, uh, doing the program right, which then incre- uh, increased the, um, the revenue decrease to local jurisdictions. So, uh, again, just to kind of summarize, you know, we've, we've had a lot of discussions over, over the years about where do we take the program? The commission, the Historic Preservation Commission has talked about some of the, um, some of the, how we may modify the program. I think the commission as a whole feels that the, the program is working very well and there's a lot of benefit, um, to the program. Preservation overall provides a lot of benefits to the community. And again, I think a lot of these were very spoken about, uh, very well, uh, by the public comments. But it, it, it really, preservation encourages investment in the community, uh, to improve properties. It helps to maintain and in, in many cases, improve property values. Maintains, then enhances the character of the community. And, um, I think Monrovia is a, a, a clear case of, of that. Community pride is huge. It's, it's an economic development tool. It, it, it encourages people to come visit, um, Monrovia. Us having a, a great historic downtown encourages Monrovians to stay in, in Monrovia and spend their money here. So again, it's an economic development tool. And the Mills Act contract is, is an investment. And, and I think it's important that we look at it as an investment in, in our historic structures and creating that interest in preservation. So that is, uh, my overview of the program. concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions, um, of the council.
I, I, I just have a couple of comments. I, I just want to really thank you, Craig. This is wonderful. For the time that I've been on, uh, council, I'm not quite sure we've had this extensive of an overview, or as you've called it, Historic Preservation 101. And, um, I have talked to a couple of people in the community and, and I, at least it was never my intention, this conversation wasn't for the purpose in my mind of how we would either, how we would get rid of our preservation, uh, programs, but just as an explanation as to how it works. And I'm very disappointed that Mr. Blackburn isn't here this evening because, um, I specifically, when I asked that I would like to have this presentation, it was with him in mind because I know that, um, he has had quite a few questions on this. And, uh, that's too bad he's not here, um, this evening.
And that he votes no on that contract that comes up. My fear had been without really understanding.
Right. And so I, I think this is a great, um, a great presentation. I did want to ask for clarification on one of them. It said, uh, the first 10 years of buy-in annual, uh, report. So that means within the first year, I mean, first 10 years, every other year they have to make a report? Is that correct?
That, that's correct.
Okay. And then the other, and I know that Tom had made kind of a tongue-in-cheek comment, but with all the, uh, legislation that's, uh, been coming down the pike and, and taking away of local control and things like that, some of the legislation, we have been able to get the legislators to agree that they would protect historic districts. So the question is, to what extent we can have broad swaths of our community designated as historic districts? Uh, I know it is a, a rather lengthy, um, and technical, um, process, but I, I, I'm just wondering if that's a possibility? And we could check with our, uh, legal counsel as to what extent that would, um, that would hold up?
And, and so that wasn't entirely tongue-in-cheek?
Yeah.
I think that, you know, Monrovia is a, a very historic town. And anything we can do to preserve the history will be beneficial. And if it also holds our friends from Sacramento at bay, then we get like a twofer.
Right, right.
And there's nothing wrong with that.
And, and there's nothing wrong with asking, you know?
I like how it, um, continues to, the, you know, maintain the continuity of our past. You know, that's the main.
Right.
So, you know, I will always support historic preservation because-
And-
Okay, any-
-care of our history.
Any other questions for Craig?
No, I just thank you, Craig. And I did learn something new tonight. I didn't know, uh, that's nice to know. And it would be nice that Alex would understand that, that at a certain point in time, the, um, the valuation goes to the Prop 13, um, level. It's, doesn't go on forever. And so, and just out of curiosity, has a- anyone ever been, has any contract ever been revoked?
No, we started one on the Aztec Hotel, you may recall that.
Uh, yes.
But, but that didn't, um, continue. And then we did have one property owner that actually canceled their Mills Act contract. They let it run out, um, but then they reinstated it, um, how, like halfway through.
Um, I add that I think there have been a couple of times when there have been, um, sincere conversations threatening revoking people.
Yes.
So, that kind of-
Well, there, there is, and I have a question, I won't say the address, but in certain circumstances, and it's not just one, where, um, maybe it doesn't directly relate to the, um, historic aspects of the property, but the property in general, especially landscaping, that is let go. Do we have any, um, overview or can we do, have, do we have any leverage there?
You know, when, when, when that's come up, generally we do some very, um, strong counseling, um, with the property owner. It doesn't specifically fall under the, um, the Mills Act contract-
Correct.
-or the historic landmark, but then it, then it would go to code enforcement.
Okay, great, thank you.
Craig, I have a question, but, um, I'll call you tomorrow for the answer.
All right.
It's regarding, um, prop, proposition, um, Prop 7, I believe it was?
Mm-hmm.
I just want to get more of an understanding, but I'll call you because we have a, another meeting coming up.
That was, that was Prop 7 in 1976, Prop 7? Or in the 70s?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Where they changed Section 8, Article what, Article 8 or something like-
Yeah, it was, basically it was a reaffirmation of the Mills Act contract. But I, I'm happy to give you more information about that.
I'll call you.
Sure.
Okay, thanks.
Thank, thank you, Craig.
Sure, anytime.
Great report, Craig, thank you. Our next meeting, our next-
Are we being asked to give some direction to staff based on this? Like, like, um, I would like to move that we direct staff to keep on, keeping on.
Well, I think maybe the appropriate, the appropriate thing might be to receive and file the report?
They don't want any input from, from council?
Pardon?
They don't want any input from council about this?
Well, I, I think we've all given them a lot of input, unless there's something new.
Yeah. It, it doing a, doing a, a great job and it's nice to know we're able to pr- preserve our historic structures. And it's nice to know the framework under which we do that. So that was great.
I've obviously heard Larry say that he's very much in favor of the project or the preservation, uh, issues as we're rolling them out and keep, continuing to do it. I hear Tom, you saying that, I hear Becky saying that, I obviously feel that way. So if the members on city council that are present, we seem to be unanimously in favor of keeping preservation going strong.
Yeah, your lights, your lights went out.
City, city hall saves power, wait, I gotta, here we go.
There you go. So I, I, I think our, our voice has been very clear. We do have another meeting starting in five minutes. So unless there's something new to add, why don't we, uh, stop the study session at this point and take a five-minute recess and we'll come back for our regular meeting?
Hey, thank you.
I just wanted to restate the obvious.
Okay, and you have.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, we'll see.